All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order. At this time, Commissioner Sanchez has invited someone to deliver the invocation.
Yes, Pastor Sanz Garcia.
Well, let's do a prayer first of all. The word of God says in Ephesians that God had set up leaders throughout the state, throughout the cities and community, that it will reflect the beauty and the wisdom of everybody in the city as well. I will be happy to do this prayer because I believe that the city of Harlingen have awesome leaders, and that we will continue to be in the leaders, not only here in Texas, but throughout the nation as well. And I'm going to be praying for the people in Boston and throughout the nation and for everybody that is here as well. Father, I thank you, Father Lord, for this meeting that is about to continue, Father Lord, and that you will give us the wisdom throughout the leaders, Father Lord, that we make the right decisions on everything they have to say. Your word says, Father, that all things are possible with you. And we understand, Father, that you are the only one that will give us the wisdom and the knowledge to go forward. And we will reflect the beauty within sight and out of us, so we can continue going forward, Father Lord, and we know that you will have words throughout this meeting, and the decisions we've made through you and through the Holy Spirit. And through every person in the community, we thank everybody in this place, all the commissioners, the city mayors, their family, and all the families and all the people as well from the city of Harlingen, Texas. We understand, Father Lord, that we are one in mind, the one in spirit. But we also have, you have set up leaders throughout the country. We pray for the President of the United States, Barack Obama, that he will make the right decision, all the things he has done. And for all people in Boston, Father Lord, they have been heard throughout the nations, throughout the countries, then you just give that love that we need, then you're going to give us that wisdom that we need, Father Lord. I ask you that you give us all the knowledge, all the people have been crying, Father Lord, for your love, that you will give to us. And all the wisdom that everybody that is here, you will give them the wisdom, the knowledge. And throughout the city, Father Lord, I know that you are powerful and you're awesome, and you will give all the knowledge, Father, that whatever they do tonight is because you are wisdom. Whatever they say tonight, Father Lord, is because you made the decisions. And you're the leader, and you're the leaders, and you will continue to be good leaders, good mayors, good commissioners, and throughout the city of Harlingen, they will reflect the beauty that you have given us, Father Lord, in the city of Harlingen, Texas. I thank you, Father Lord, for each one of us, and you will bless every family. You will bless every one of us, even for those that need jobs, for those that don't have, for those that have. That we could bless, Father Lord, and we shall bless them as well. I thank you, Father Lord, for everybody that is here. I thank, Father Lord, for those that are in need right now, for those that need jobs. Somehow, some way, they will get one sooner or later, but you are with them, and I thank you as well. For Shino Sanchez, the citizen, Shino Sanchez as well, Father, and Chris Boswell, Cardinals, Robert, Danny, Victor, Leal, Rothman. I thank you, Father Lord, for each one of them, and they will, they have all the power, Father Lord, to take this leadership into a highest level. We honor you, Father Lord, in the name of the Father, in the name of Jesus, in the name of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. If you could just have one more, just a moment of silence for all of the city of Boston and the victims of the terror attack, and all the family and all the citizens of Boston. Just a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. You'd be seated and welcome. Thank you for being at our meeting tonight. We're going to start off with some public announcements and then a lot of good recognition of folks. So, number one on the agenda is a public announcement and attendance.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I just want to give you a brief reminder of the upcoming events for the month of May. On Saturday, May the 4th, we have our Fiesta Cinco de Mayo at Gutierrez Park, that is from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. On Saturday, May the 4th, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we have Vida La Vida 5K Run hosted by the Valley AIDS Council at the sports complex on Wilson Road. This event has been advertised all over the valley, and they're expecting over 1,000 participants in this race. On Saturday, May 11th, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., the first please on the Hill Series starts, located at the Kelby Park. Another event coming up is their first annual Harlingen Summit Bike Ride. This is a free event on May the 2nd at 6:00 p.m. It will start at Bicycle World, and it's going to be a five-mile bike ride.
All right, thank you very much. Item two is board recognition.
I have an event.
All right.
I signed up.
Well, if you have an event, you can announce it from your seat.
Oh, okay. My name is Yolanda Chapa, 258 Altas Palmas, and my event is going to be for May 11th, which is, of course, the day of induction. The event is that I challenge, I have been alleged that someone up there is on cocaine, and I challenge all the city commissioners and the mayor to take a blood test. It will be, the event will be for blood work, for the urine, and for the test, for the hair test, because we want to make Harlingen a drug-free city, and we have to start with a city commission.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chapa.
Thank you very much. God bless you.
Item two are board recognitions, and I'd like, if I call your name, if you could come on up, we have incoming board members, Michael Lammer, coming to our development corporation, really a key, one of our key boards that helps keep our city growing, and we want to thank Michael for agreeing to take on this important responsibility. So, thank you, Michael. We appreciate your service and mission. Sergeant Commander Ford Kinsley to come up forward. This is, I think, a really great appointment. He's been appointed to the Harlingen Patrol Advisory Board, and why not? He and his MMA cadets are always out there helping with every single cleanup and every important project that Harlingen Patrol has ever done, and so I think it's a great addition. Thank you, Sergeant Vega, for all you do and all your cadets do for our community and for your service.
We're all, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Another great appointment, Claudia Chapa, is Claudia here? She's been appointed to Harlingen Patrol, we'll get that to her also. And Timothy Ryan, is Timothy here? Appointed to our Harlingen Municipal Advisory Board, next to another important group, so thank you, Timothy, for your great. Sal Cormone, Sal Valore, Cormone Jr. Proud to have appointed Sal to our Veterans Advisory Board, and Sal was already doing the work, so it was natural to appoint him to the Advisory Board. He's done so much with the Honor Guard, and really has done so much to improve our veterans' events, and we want to thank you for everything you do, both in uniform and out of uniform or off duty.
Do your work for the best.
Thank you. Martha Simpson, an officer, appointed to our zoning board of adjustments, and part of the group that's going to help, help keep our city clean, cleaned up. So, thank you so much for your freedom to serve, and thank you. And we have an outgoing board member, Samuel Cabazos, is Samuel here, Mr. Cabazos? All right, he's outgoing from our golf course advisory board, we want to thank him for all of his service. Item, the second item, is the presentation recognizing the volunteers from the Cameron County Judicial Justice Department and Texas Judicial Justice Department, Tamaia House of Boys, and assisting in the elderly assistance program.
Mayor, I do have just a quick PowerPoint, just if I can just briefly. This is, as you know, the city of Harlingen has a regular monthly neighborhood cleanups. Well, this is in addition to the regular cleanups that we have, we also have monthly elderly assistance property cleanups, and we wanted to give you a glimpse of what some of these volunteers have done throughout the year. January was Commissioner Steel's area. You can see the before and after, trash at the bridge removal. February, 2003, oh, one, H. Jackson, District 2, Commissioner Lepitarian, pre-trimming. March was Commissioner Sanchez's area. You can see the before and after, trash and the bridge removal. And then in April, we had a storage shed demolition, and you'd see the before and after, and it is, I want to thank the city staff as well as the volunteers that have helped us throughout the year in making this happen. Mayor?
Great. Is anybody here from the Tamaia House? If you're here from the Tamaia House, come on up, and the Cameron County Judicial Justice Department, if you're here also, come on up. We want to thank you guys for providing this really important service to our community, and especially to the, to those folks that you helped out by helping to clean up their neighborhood, their homes. It's really a fantastic thing that you guys did for your community, and we applaud you for your service to your community, and we think that it's just a great thing. You did a very important thing for us. And so we have these certificates, I know there are a number of you, and I'll read your names, I'll read everybody's name, but tell me when I get to you. R. Nelson. D. Schwartz. E. Lopez. Lopez. And I, Velasco. Mr. Velasco. All right, and you want to say anything?
Sir, excuse me, Mayor, I got a list of the young men that were with us on that day. They are not here today, but just for the record. Chris Rangel, Danny Roswell, Lucas Hernandez, Gilberto, that's Nikki Monstraca and Randy Moos, were the young men that were on behalf of the Dunafer person.
All right, we have certificates for them, and we want to thank you all for your program, and appreciate everything you do to help our community and help these young men. All right, thank you. Now, some presentation to recognize the members of the Rising Leaders.
It's a halfway house.
Sarah, would you like to come up and bring the Rising Leaders up?
Soon.
So, when all you guys get up here, guys and girls. Now, this is an outstanding program that our community has, and sponsored by the Harlingen City Chamber of Commerce. They bring together these young men and women into a very important leadership training program. They get to learn a lot about our community. They meet everybody, they get to meet with leaders from around the community, they get to meet with our business leaders. I know that this effort was stepped up after we named, we started the juvenile task force, crime task force, a few years ago, and we wanted to get the opinion and the advice of a lot of our young people. And these are the young people who have been selected, some of the young people who have been selected for this program for this year, I think they have 10 from Harlingen South, 10 from Harlingen High, 10 from East Academy. And we want to congratulate you for everything that you're doing, to learn more about your community, to become better leaders, so that you can lead this community in the future. And you guys are great, and we appreciate everything you do. Sarah, you want to say anything?
This is Class 20 of Rising Leaders, and we work very closely with Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District, and it's been a really great program that I've gotten to become familiar with and getting to know some of these kids. I just met them recently, but they're all great, and it's been a really wonderful program for me and hopefully them too. It's something we look forward to continuing that partnership with ATAC.
All right, we want to congratulate you guys. Let me squeeze together, and make sure that the camera can see your face, so, can you see them? No, no, you got to get, we have to step forward and make sure, get in there and make sure that...
Okay, I can see every face. I'll hold on. On count of three. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, now we have item five, which is presentation of proclamations. The first proclamation we have is for National Public Works Week, and we'd like to invite Assistant City Manager Sarah out here, Javier Zamora, the city engineer, Felix Flores, the sanitation superintendent, Eli Cruz, the traffic supervisor, Lily Garcia, administrative assistant. Thank you, everybody.
I think that's it, Mayor. Anybody?
That's fine, whatever. We're getting public buildings.
Good. We have great staff and great group of people that work hard in our public buildings department. We want to recognize each and every one of you for all the great work you do to make our city great and to make this an important department run smoothly with such professionalism. And so, I'm going to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as drainage, streets and highways, public building solid waste collection, and whereas quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon all efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the quality of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works and departments is materially influenced by people's attitudes and understanding the importance of the work that we perform. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, bear the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2013, as National Public Works Week. The city of Harlingen, I call upon all citizens and city organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize contributions that public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality life." Daniel, say anything?
Well, we are very fortunate in Harlingen to have very dedicated staff, very hardworking staff, where even during an emergency situation like a hurricane, when everybody else is leaving town, these guys stick around and they get things done, and they get things done for the benefit of our city. I want to introduce everybody. This is Jonathan Velasquez, he's our fleet services manager and resourcing coordinator. Lily Garcia is my administrative assistant, who handles all the work that comes out of my office, I feel sorry for her. Benito Semurda is our street superintendent. Eli Cruz is our traffic signal superintendent. Back behind him is our city engineer, Javier Zamora. Felix Flores is our sanitation superintendent, and Jafan Borrego is our public buildings assistant superintendent. They probably better.
We'll present the proclamation to Lily, so that she doesn't get lost. And the next proclamation is a proclamation for claiming today, Voise S. Vela Jr. Day. So, would you like to come up, would you like to bring your family out?
That's okay. Hold on, please. Dad, they're kind of running late, so...
Run, hurry, hurry.
Well, everybody else, everybody else in Mos's family is pretty famous, you know. He's got a famous dad, who's a former county judge, he's got a famous mother, who is one of our dearest treasures here in Harlingen, one of the greatest gifts to public education. An uncle who was a federal judge, he's got a cousin who's a congressman, and he's got a brother who's here, or was here.
There he is.
Manny, there he is. Who is the CEO of Valley Baptist Health System. But he's really maybe arguably more famous than that, than all of them, maybe all put together. He's the only guy I know, he's the only guy I know at Harlingen who has a Wikipedia entry dedicated to him. And so I want to read this proclamation about one of Harlingen's own, one of the great products of this great community. And so, it's long. Whereas Voise S. Vela Jr. is a native of Harlingen, Texas. Graduate from Harlingen High School in 1980, and a graduate of University of Texas at Austin. Saint Mary's University School of Law. And whereas Mr. Vela acknowledges his parents and their influence in leading him to community service, because his parents were always involved as community leaders, working with numerous organizations over the years, meeting so many wonderful people, and always willing to serve the public. And whereas before returning to school to study for his law degree, he went to New York to try to make it on Broadway and become a singer.
Yes.
It's a good thing that he went into other endeavors. Whereas Mr. Vela is a lawyer, government advisor, and Hispanic leader, named by the National Journal as one of the top 100 Hispanics and 300 top decision makers in the United States. And whereas he is the first to serve in senior executive roles in the White House, first during the Clinton administration as chief financial officer and senior advisor on Latino affairs in the office of Al Gore, and later during the Obama administration as director of administration for Joe Biden, Vice President of the United States. And whereas after his services with Vice President Gore, he helped launch a cyberspace company, later creating the consulting company Diverse Directions, supporting the development of Latino marketing strategies and community outreach. And whereas his achievements include the creation of El Centro Legal Latino in Birmingham, Alabama, helping to educate members of the Southeast United States Latino community on their legal rights. And whereas he served in the following capacities of public service and organizations: founder and first chair of the Alabama Hispanic Chamber of Commerce; executive director of the National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals, an organization that includes over 12,000 members from 48 states; senior vice president of multicultural strategies at United Dominion Realty Trust; president of his own consulting firm, Dominion Dallas LLC; staff member of the Texas House of Representatives; committee clerk and legislative director for state representative Renee Olivaeta; and committee clerk for Senator Edel Lucio. Whereas he is currently a partner in the Public Policy and Regulation Group at Holland and Knight, that's a big law firm in Washington, DC, focusing on client development, government relations, strategic communications, regulatory affairs, and Hispanic and LGBT outreach. And whereas the city of Harlingen expresses its sincere appreciation and thanks for his strong leadership in public service, and has earned the admiration and high regard of top civic leaders and the affection of a host of individuals for his deep and genuine love for public service, now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, bear the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim today, Voise S. Vela Jr. Day, and call upon all citizens to recognize this.
Hey, so, let me, my brother Manny said, I have to keep it extremely short, okay? In Washington, DC, we never, ever keep our speeches short, so I'm going to try really hard to just say a few sentences. First and foremost, I am the most blessed person in the world, because I was born to these two people, first and foremost. And to learn from them, a strong work ethic, and a can-do spirit, and the attitude that, the old adage, that what is given to one much more is expected. And that's the way we were raised. My cousin Ralph's back here in the back of the room, representing my feel Fili Mons family, they were raised the exact same way. That's why our cousin and his brother is your congressman, and I have watched him work every day, starting at 6:00 a.m. until midnight, on your behalf, fighting for you. That's a continual effort on our family's part. My brother, making sure that when you're sick, you have the highest quality health care in the country, right here in Harlingen, Texas. Mr. Mayor, I have, I'm on first-name basis with a lot of mayors across this country, from Antonio Villarosa in Los Angeles, to the next mayor of New York, Christine Quinn, to Aneesh Parker in Houston, and the list goes on. I was with you yesterday. I watched you in action, because I brought guests from New York that I wanted them to invest in Harlingen. And I watched your mayor in action. And let me tell you something, he is right up there with the mayors of those major cities in this country, and I thank you for your leadership, and I thank you for this. To the city commission, I'm glad you didn't have to vote on this, because it probably wouldn't have passed. But I thank you all very much for your service. As somebody who has dedicated his life to public service, I know the sacrifices that you have made to serve your community. It does not go unnoticed. And to the people of Harlingen, I say, make sure they never, ever fail to recognize how much you appreciate what they do for you, because it is a tremendous sacrifice to serve you. The last thing I want to say is, to the young people right here in Harlingen, because I'm a graduate of Harlingen High School, and the first Latino to go twice to the White House. And I'll tell you something, if I can do that, so can you. And you're going to go higher than I did, okay? I will also tell you one other thing, Mr. Mayor, and I'll close with this. You can take the boy out of Harlingen, but you cannot take the Harlingen out of the boy. And I'll tell you this, Al Gore and Joe Biden know where Harlingen is. Thank you so much. Good to see you again. God, Mos, you did such a good job. Thank you, by the way. Good to see you. How are you? Thank you very much. Hello. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I have a request that we consider moving COVID comments for the minutes from the end of the meeting, so that people can express their First Amendment rights.
All right, we'll go to item 20, which is citizen communication. See, who's signed up for that?
We have Commissioner Robert Lethwich, and if there was to call in places in May, November election, you don't change.
Robert Lethwich, 23, 26 East Adams, Harlingen, Texas. I'd like to say that I'm stepping down from my seat as commissioner, so I can speak and take advantage of my First Amendment rights. Subject matter is polling places, or lack thereof, on the West Side. I just want to put this in matter of record, that last week I worked diligently to try to get through more polling places added to the upcoming election. Mr. Sanchez was participating with me, but later changed his mind. And I just wanted to clarify some issues. First of all, one of the things that's been said or been read in the media, Mayor, is that you have little or nothing to do with some of the activity that's gone on with respect to moving the election from November back to May. As you know, I have submitted documents to the Department of Justice, very lengthy documents, indicating that there was... indicating that there was an illegal meeting, there was not a legal basis for what occurred. And I just wanted to point out to the community that last summer, that you put on the agenda to rescind that ordinance, nobody else. There was not a commissioner involved in it. You did it under the authority of the Charter. So that you did participate in trying to move the election. We did have the election, everybody does now, over 14,000 registered voters in the City of Harlingen came out. That was almost 50% of the registered voters came out. What do we have in May? We have about 10%. Good reason to move, especially when you have a high Hispanic ratio of voters that come out. The fact is, again, Mayor, the New Year's Eve meeting that you called on Friday that occurred on a Monday, of New Year's Eve, December 31st, 2012, the addenda item was again placed on the agenda by you, Mayor Oswell. The fact is, moving forward to the polling place issue, we have never had fewer than 10 in a citywide election in the last decade in the 21st century. We've offset 10 election polling places. For some reason, before any consultation with the Commissioner, the City Secretary brings five polling places to the Commission for consideration. The fact is, using your own words, as quoted in the Valley Morning Star, about that meeting, where we voted for the five polling places, you pointed out, "Nobody said anything at the Commission meeting when the polls were approved," including Commissioner Lethwich, Oswell said. The fact of the matter is, two more polling places were added in a subsequent meeting, but there was no direction at the prior meeting by the City Commission to authorize the City or the City Secretary to do it. By whose authority were those two additional polling places added? I would like to know who instructed the City Secretary to add those two additional polling places out, still leaving three eliminated West Side polling places from the city's election. Mayor, you have put two items on the agenda to avoid high voter turnout. And now you say that there is... You have no participation in the modification or the reduction of polling places. The fact is, in conclusion, I just want to make this a matter of record, but I'd also like to point out that we need change. We need to move the civil rights of Harlingen residents into the 21st century.
Next.
Gilmore, she already spoke about drug-free meeting. The next one is Ron Ossoff, but I don't understand what he wrote, as far as he asked.
It's the same topic, Your Honor. Good afternoon. The topic would be that why is the West Side being excluded? There was a mention right now, three eliminated West Side polls. I would urge you, there should be more polls open, because it's part of the city, and we have one election where it includes the entire city in a particular term. Now, there was a challenge given to me approximately 10 months ago, that this kind of forum, we're on participating right now in our democracy, was not like other valley cities to put at the very end. It turns out, sort of like the mayor says, not three meetings. And this is in reference to saying that when you review something, he was wrong about citizen forums in the valley, he's wrong about three meetings, because he admits regarding an ill-employed, that he was the one that proffered that suggestion. And then, in a novel Roberts parliamentary maneuver of continuation, only he knows what that could possibly mean, just like Mr. Lethwich just indicated. You have the city manager, he's not involved, two commissioners, they're not involved, and our illustrious mayor, who always deems himself to be an eagle scout, a true eagle, an irritant term to him, believes in democracy. His big mo-o momentum is totalitarianism, so long as it's his side, so long as it's his side that's doing the totalitarianism, he's no eagle.
This one is Gilmore.
Gilmore, 709 Town Lane Drive. Mr. Mayor, I too am quite aware of your actions. I'm appalled, to say the least. I am quite aware of the fact, because I too have looked at the map, and I'm aware of the fact that the schools that you've decided to take away the polling places are places where elderly Hispanics live, most of them don't drive automobiles, and this almost completely and effectively shuts them down from being able to go vote. And many of them, although they don't drive, they're very aware of the politics in the city, and they're pretty upset about it. And I am too, as well as those who don't know what's going on, I'm sure that they will be, but, sir, it's... In my opinion, the momentum, momentum, momentum is all about a steamroller that rolls over the top of people and their rights. I'm appalled. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing it.
Ladies and gentlemen, that was Citizen Communication. Since no item is on the agenda discussion, we don't... We're not allowed to respond. So item six is the approval of the regular meeting, March 20th, 2013. Are we making a motion that we approve the minutes or regular meeting?
We have an error on the minutes, I'd like to point out. On page 11, line 43, I don't think I was Mayor Pro Tem that day. I'm not sure who made the motion, but it says Mayor Pro Tem Leal made the motion. I'll accept the title, but I don't remember making the motion.
What page is that?
Page 11, line 43.
Okay, well then, with the... With that correction, accept that amendment correction or restate your motion.
With the amended recommendation, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the Consent Agenda, and I'm going to take items just seven B, C, D, and E, as our motion to approve Consent Agenda, item seven D, C, D, and E. Senator Mayor?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then I had to file an affidavit on seven A, so I'll just withdraw.
Let the record be flat, Mayor is exiting the room. Mayor Pro Tem, please take your chair.
Seven A on the Consent Agenda, do you have a motion to approve seven A?
I'll make the motion now that he's left the room.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Please allow the mayor to return to the course.
Item eight is the presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2011, 2012, my law, Chilton. And so we'll ask, I guess, Quinn Anderson and maybe Alvia to come present the cap.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. We have worked with your finance department, with Mr. Trevino and her staff, to complete the audit of the city's financial statements and to render an opinion on the comprehensive annual financial report for the City of Harlingen. We met with your audit committee last month and reviewed the financial statements in detail and reviewed our findings and recommendations, and I've prepared for you some brief charts that might help highlight some of the information in the report. Because you have, in your packet, I believe, the Bound Financial Report, which is well over 300 pages, including comprehensive information about the city. Our report, we've audited the financial statements and rendered our opinion on those financial statements. I want to point out that the financial statements include the primary government, its governmental activities, common to a city, police fire, public works, business-type activities, golf course, municipality, museum, sanitation, and the component units of the city, which include the Economic Development Corporation, the Community Improvement Board, the Harlingen Water Works System, and Valley International Airport. In this 300-page report, we've rendered some opinions that deal with your financial statements. On page 31 is the auditor's opinion, which is non-modified report. And on page 311, there's a report on the city's compliance with grant requirements applicable to the major federal programs for the city. And those reports reflect favorably upon the city. We did not identify any matters of non-compliance or material deficiencies in controls that were reported in our compliance reports. We reviewed that with the city's audit committee and the city's internal auditor. In terms of financial highlights, if you look into page 53 in your big report, there's a statement that includes the assets, liabilities, and net assets of the city, and you can see that assets are fairly comparable for 2012 compared to 2011. This is a combined report of the entire City of Harlingen and its primary government. At $190 million liabilities, about $56 million in your net assets, that changed from $134 million to $133 million. And there's a four-year, five-year comparison there. In terms of revenues for the city, page 54 and 55 will give you some detailed information in your report. And governmental activities, revenues exceeded $47 million this year compared to about $45 and a half a year before. The business-type activities, again, sanitation services and golf course, municipality, had almost $9.5 million in revenues during the year. In terms of a more detailed breakdown of those revenues, we've provided and included in your report on page 54 and 55 is a breakdown that shows you property tax revenues, sales tax revenues, various sources of revenue have been for the past fiscal year. And you can see property taxes have remained steady for the city. Sales tax taxes have grown from $14 million to $15.2 million. You can see the other sources of revenues as well. And for business-type activities, again, sanitation, golf course, museum, and municipality, very comparable to last year, except for the auditorium, which had some grant revenues utilized in renovating the facility. In terms of expenditures for the city, we've prepared a chart that shows you, and if you look at page 54 and 55 in your detailed report, public safety represents, you know, the lion's share of expenditures for the city, at 50% of the expenditures this year, about 42% in the prior year, and highways and streets representing another 11% this year and last year, and culture and recreation representing almost 15% last year, 11% this year. Those are the major expenditure categories for the primary government.
When you pass that chart, interest on long-term debt for 2012, over $2 million, it's a number that's kind of gone up over the last 10 years. Does that interest include the EDC and their debt with Mass Pro?
Commissioner, that interest is interest for the primary government and its governmental activities, and doesn't include the separate component units, although there are separate financial statements within the report that represent the component unit financial statements.
So that money from the governmental activities is basically, that $2 million is paid for with property taxes and sales tax revenues?
The interest on that debt would have been paid for, most likely, with property taxes, and that was not paid by property taxes, would have been paid by other sources of revenue, including sales tax revenues, if you're correct. There are some detailed notes in the financial statement that we reviewed with the audit committee that cover all of the long-term debt of not only the city, but each of its component units, including the waterworks and the EDC. And those are included within the financial statements and in the separate component unit financial statements. The airport didn't have any long-term debt.
When I was looking, I did look at the tables, page 14, I guess that's kind of hand-in-hand with the pie chart. Shows fiscal year 2003 through 2012, and the debt, it looks like we've gone from what it was in 2003, about $16,700,000 in primary government debt, to over $44 million. The per capita, per-person liability in 2003 was $1,003, and that was with fewer people. And that we're approaching $2,000 a person in 2012. It sounds like we've got a borrowing issue.
You're... I'm not sure you're referring to page 14 in the financial statements, but it must be one of the statistical charts?
Yeah, one of the statistical charts.
Okay.
I guess that's there to show a trend? We don't want to show it from year to year, because you can't get a broader picture?
Yes, and probably, you know, Mr. Lethwich is referring, you know, if you turn back into your report to page, beginning at page 279, there's some significant statistical reports that'll give you probably, in most cases, 10-year financial trends that include revenue capacity, debt capacity, and some demographic information as well as operating statistics. Must be referring back to the statistical section, which is included in your conference...
296, top table 14, page 296.
Okay, I thought you said page 14, but, yes.
I think that's a good point of reference, that might be a trend we need to pay more attention to.
Right, and to be clear, and I think you've attempted to be clear, on page 296, that's debt from the governmental activities and business-type activities.
The debt jumps into... After 2007, because of the debt for the new police station and for the soccer complex.
Right, and the debt on this page, I think you pointed it out, is not part of the component unit debt, doesn't include the EDC debt, this is general government debt.
So basically, if you were to kind of eyeball the debt, with the total, the primary government debt of 44, over $44 million, then I think the component unit debt relative to the EDC, city's debt's probably close to $100 million. We're probably paying $4, $5 million a year in interest.
Well, don't round up $20 million, Robert. Let's try to keep it within, you know, a million or two, instead of rounding up 20 million. No, no, you got $70 million, you had $49 million of the debt, plus $31 million on the Mass Pro shop, if that's your point, then it's... That adds up to 80, not 100.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that Mayor Oswell pointed out that the capital improvements that were made, some of those were spent, some of that money was spent in general obligation bonds on the projects that were turned down by voters, and I think that was a bad thing in 2007, and then I said it again, I'm saying that now we're seeing the fruit of that.
Can we allow... Can we allow him to continue with his prison mission, and then he can ask questions?
Very good. And you could probably look more closely on page 53 for the total debt, but that debt includes the water and sewer systems, well, the sanitization, business-type activities, look at expenses, business-type, expense analysis for business-type activities, 77% this year, 76% last year, represented in sanitation services and the golf course, about 14% each year, very comparable in those business-type activities from one year to the next. And then the last chart I presented, of course, there's 300 and some odd pages of information within the city's comprehensive annual financial report. The last page is the changes in general fund balance from 2003 to 2012. I think the financial statements at a final level show that the general fund's balance has grown from 10.8 million in 2011 to 13.3 million in 2012, which is, you know, good growth in the past year. Again, this is a comprehensive annual financial report. I'd be remiss in not pointing out, you know, that the city's report has been submitted historically to the Government Finance Officers Association and has received... historically to the Government Finance Officers Association and has received, because of the work of your finance department, is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And so, this report's not possible without a lot of work by your personnel internally, and of course, because it's a compliance report as well, it involves all of your departments, you have to ensure that the city is complying with grant compliance requirements. That's passed over, I have just some questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question back on page 53, where you alluded to the overall city's debt and including the component units. Just so I don't mistake that, what is the city's total debt, including the component units?
You know, if you look on page 53, there's $60 million roughly in long-term debt within the component units, and another $44 million, it appears, within primary government.
So that's $104 million, not $80 million, that's the mayor?
Including the waterworks.
Yeah.
I'd encourage you to study note J in the financial statements, which begin back at page 97 and can continue on for several pages and include all of the different sources of long-term debt, including the debt in each of the component units. Page 102 shows $32 million in the EDC, and another 18, almost 19 million in water and sewer system. Again, that goes on through page 104, one of the longest footnotes, and of course, you know, very, very relevant disclosure for the city.
All right, are there any other questions?
I have some questions, probably more for staff that have to do with some data this year. I don't know if this is the time to ask them, but I guess we could ask. On page 302, it's table 20, we've got some statistical, there's some operating stats and statistics about function and program. I don't know if this data is, is just not updated, but I'm sure Quentin, your firm just puts in there what the city's staff gives it in terms of what these numbers are.
Right, the statistical section is presented as unaudited, and it's information supplied by city personnel. Your cable 20 on page 302 is operating statistics by function, it's more demographic and less financial, things like volumes of publications in the library, right?
Yeah, let me just tell you where I'm going with this. Obviously, we're being asked to approve this information as a commission, and I just wanted to validate some of the things here with staff, if we can, because some of them don't, they don't appear to be accurate, but they could be. I just wanted to make sure that staff confirms with this before we approve what you're presenting to us. I appreciate the financial aspects of it, but let me just ask a few questions.
This is not an action item, this is simply a presentation of the audit. There's no approval of the audit.
Well, I think that we probably, since we don't have a workshop to ask a few questions, right, we don't, I just wanted to start off with the fire protection. I know that section is a concern, something that the mayor likes to toge, but, Darrell, can you come up for a minute? I got some questions. We've got a line out of here that says a number of hydrants, and it's a 10-year trend or 10-year stat, statistic. In 2004, 2005, it looked like we were on an upward trend, and we had, we're recording 2,335 fire hydrants in the city. And for the last two years now, we're reporting only 1,990. That's a pretty sizable decrease. Is that an accurate number?
Yes, sir, well, there's been some hydrants that have been decommissioned and so forth through the rehabilitation process, but...
It looks like we've decommissioned 345 hydrants?
Well, maybe decommissioned.
From 2010, 345 hydrants?
Maybe decommissioned is not the appropriate word, but we have a number of identifying those hydrants which are privately and privately maintained, which will not be reported. There's been a lot of confusion in the past over public hydrants and private hydrants.
Because I know, you know, we're attempting to, you know, grow through government, you know, expansion, but it looks like we're contracting.
Well, and as development happens, and the subdivision ordinances require installation of hydrants by the developers, yes, they are increasing. There are new hydrants that are being installed.
Because at the 1,990, we're below the 2004 number of hydrants, and I would think that a significant number in reduction to that point would affect our insurance ratings for the citizens?
Well...
Because hydrant availability in fire station locations is what that's primarily based off of?
No, so as far as hydrant locations are determined through the ordinances as...
No, I'm saying that when we're reducing these things, the fire suppression capabilities of the city is rated for the purpose of charging homeowners property...
Are we still, are we still talking about the CAFR? Are we getting outside of the CAFR? City attorney, are we still talking about the CAFR? Because now we're talking, I mean, he asked a question about, you know, what we're supposed to be talking about is the information he's tagged in here. Now we're talking about a policy related to decommissioning fire hydrants.
Well, I'm trying to get a, I'm trying to get a validation if that's really the number of fire hydrants we have in the city. This is, this is an audit report of the city's assets. This also reflects an asset too, right? But Quentin, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't your audit based on the accuracy of the information provided to you in preparing this, it's just a confidential audit?
It's not based, the statistical section, as I indicated, those numbers that are non-financial aren't audited by us.
But if I was an outside group looking to do business in the city of Harlingen, wouldn't I, wouldn't I say, well, this CAFR has been audited by your firm?
I would think you would attempt to use this CAFR, provide the credibility about the city, sure.
Wouldn't the credibility of this information...
Okay, well, ask, ask your question, and let's move on.
I'm trying to find out what happened to the 345 fire hydrants?
Okay, Darrell, do you know?
Well, I can assure you, we maintain more hydrants than 1,900.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Is it valid or not? That's all I'm asking.
Okay.
Because that's a lot, that's...
All right, can you look, can you look into, and if it needs to be corrected?
That's almost 20% of your fire protection capacity.
If you could look into that, and perhaps, sure, there may be a correction, this may be the number of fire hydrants. All right, are there any other questions? All right, well, I, I would like to congratulate the staff for an outstanding report. This is a great report. This indicates that we have an outstanding financial year. That's borne out by the statements of the, of the rating firms, Standard and Poor's, and Fitch, who continue to applaud the good, strong financial management that our city staff is providing. Certainly, a two-and-a-half-plus-million-dollar addition to our general fund is an extraordinary accomplishment, both from a savings, cost-saving standpoint, and from an increased revenue standpoint, from our increased retail sales tax. And so, that's a phenomenal number, and it's really a great tribute to the hard work of our city staff. And we congratulate you for putting together a good report, and thank you, Quentin, and your staff for making such a thorough and prompt review and providing this audit to us in a timely manner. Thank you very much. Item nine is a public hearing to consider and ordinance on first amendment amending the City of Harlingen Vision 2020 Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 4, Long Range Thoroughfare Plan, by upgrading the designation of the locations described in the executive summary form prepared by the Planning and zoning department.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The city coordinator, Albert Aldana, with Aldana Engineering and Traffic Design, did the update on their long-range thoroughfare plan. Mr. Aldana is very familiar with the city roadway system, having worked with several projects here in the city, as well as working on projects specifically for the school district, specifically traffic studies. The city's has been working on this long-range thoroughfare plan for about nine months. The original thoroughfare plan was adopted in 2003. Since that 2003 adoption, the city has approved some minor amendments to the thoroughfare plan. I'll turn it over to Mr. Aldana, so he can go into a little more detail on the study he did on the thoroughfare.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Albert Aldana with Aldana Engineering and Traffic Design out of Waslaco. Last time I was here to present to you our recommendations on the thoroughfare plan. Those recommendations classified basically all the roads as arterials, major arterial, minor arterial, major collector, minor collector, and then local roads. And the purpose of that classification was basically to identify the priority, priority and a hierarchy of the different types of roads, so that you can emphasize a priority for certain types of roads. This is typical of what is done throughout, you know, the state and throughout the country. Last time there was a question regarding the use of a model which is produced by Tech Stop and the Hollidge Sublet OPO, and I was asked to come back with some information about that, and also to do a case study, an evaluation of three individual roads, that we can compare our current data versus what the model shows. So with that, I'll begin here with the travel model, travel demand model that's produced through the Tech Stop's model. Basically, the model is a four-step model that is traditional through all the MPOs and throughout all the DOTs throughout the country. It's a pretty standard process. The, the model basically consists of four steps, a trip generation, a trip distribution, a mode choice, and then also a trip assignment. And Tech Stop produces all of this in conjunction with the MPO. The model is then calibrated. It verifies current information. These models are produced every five years, so those five years are verified with data that's also collected every five years. And so, there's constant checking of the models. There's also a validation process. Basically, you look at different models and validate the results. What these models do, first of all, the models are done every five years, five-year rotation. Secondly, what these models do is incorporate a, do a base year analysis and also a forecasted year analysis, which usually it's about 30, 30 years down the road. What they do is they look at also program projects that are foreseen and that are to be done or completed within that time period. So there are some instances, the model produces some results in which the volumes actually decrease because it takes into account other surrounding streets, and those streets get improved, and we may be looking at a particular road in which volume decreases because of what's happening in the surrounding streets, or what the improvements that are going to occur within that 30-year period. Now, the use of the travel demand model is used by the MPO to not only develop their transportation plan, but to also perform further studies as needed. They use it as a ranking and finding out where they need to prioritize studies and where they need to, for example, one of the things that has arrived from this is the congestion management, congestion management studies, in which they look at congestion based on, you know, based on the classification of the roads. Ranking of transportation improvements, also the TIP that is produced, Transportation Improvement Plan, that is, the data from the MPO model is used to in order to develop these three things. The end result is that basically the MPO, or the model, that it serves as an ultimate guide to the expanding tax dollars, state, local, and federal transportation funds. So, you know, it's, it's something that we need to recognize as we move here. The way we recommended our classifications is not only just based on what the model is outputting, the model outputs a forecasted ADT, for example. We looked at other factors like long-range growth. The city staff provided information on what is the growth like, where we foresee improvements. We also looked at engineering feasibility to see if a particular type of classification is really feasible for that type of road. We looked, of course, the ADT derived from the model. We also, for some locations, actually did some specific traffic analysis. And then finally, we also used our own engineering judgment. If the model was telling us, for example, that a certain road is forecasted to carry only a certain amount of traffic, which was more consistent with a local road, but we saw the overall picture, how a certain road connects to another, and realized that, you know, we need to provide a different function between those two roads, then we used that engineering judgment in order to make our recommendation. So we, not only did we take into consideration the ADT forecast from the model, but different things is outlined here. The first case study that we looked at, and one that was highlighted last time, is the Rioondo Road between Morgan Boulevard and 13th Street. As depicted here in this picture, we see that the road is pretty wide, it's approximately 47 feet wide, and it has been restripped here with a continuous left-hand lane down the middle, which actually serves very well as the school, it is in operation there. Traffic that goes in there operates very nicely and is able to allow for smoother traffic, especially for through traffic in the eastern redirection. So this, right now, is considering what's out there right now with Memorial Middle School. The overall picture, though, it does account for a school that Hardin CIISD is currently working on, and that is the School of Health Professions. That school will be located adjacent to the Memorial Middle School, and that does entail some additional traffic to Rioondo Road. So this overall picture is kind of data that's normally provided to the MPOs, and on a five-year basis, if it wasn't caught on one cycle, then it would be caught on the next one. Again, this concept is to basically be able to predict the future traffic that may be there, and we constantly update the model with information such as this, this project that is coming up that will generate significant traffic. Now, this right here outlines, or details, the more specific information from the model, and we did the comparison here. We went back and looked at the 1999 model. The model there basically showed a 99 volume of only 1,100 vehicles on Rioondo. And then, for that model year, the future year, 2030, was forecasted to be 4,460. In the 2004 model, we noticed that the model revealed a traffic of 2064, it increased five years later, approximately 1,000 vehicles more. In the forecasted 20-year, 2035, we saw a number there that basically was, we believe is an error. That number was so low that it was significantly less than the 1999 model, we know that that's an error in the model. In the, when we looked at the 2009 model, right now, which is ongoing, that's the latest model, there is no information yet available, it's all preliminary at this point. That model is expected to be finalized, but we don't have that forecasted volume, which would be for the year 2040. However, as you see, the volumes started increasing. We highlighted a column there, the 2012, 2013. The city of Harlingen did some counts, and we also did some counts as part of a traffic study that we did for, for the School of Health Professions here recently, about a month ago. And we came up with some numbers that were pretty much consistent with city numbers, and that totaled approximately 3,900 vehicles on that road. What this is telling us basically, that the models basically are not showing the full number that is there. They're already, if you take a look at the forecasted number for year, for the 99 base year, it shows 4,460. We are already almost there in year 2013. So, but as I mentioned earlier, the model also takes into account other projects... account other projects that are, that may be planned, and therefore reduce sometimes the traffic. If a certain road would be overburdened right now because of inadequacies on other roads, the model is taking into account in the future those improvements that therefore alleviate traffic on certain roads. That's the only, I think, that we saw there. If you look at the numbers, though, right now it's 2012, and it has an existing capacity with the center turn lane. It has about a ten thousand vehicle capacity per day, vehicle per day. And right now, we're approximately less than half of that. And so if we look at, what we were proposing originally is basically to classify that road as a minor arterial, which would be able to accommodate up to thirty thousand vehicles for that road. So our overall, as I mentioned, is not to really look at what the output of the model. The model, if we were to just base it strictly on the forecast of the model, we would be recommending a local road facility, which is basically what you have right now. The idea is to look at planning and other growth that's going to happen, and we foresee that this should be classified as an arterial. This classification doesn't mean that you will, or this document doesn't mean that you won't have to acquire a hundred feet of rideaway right now. It just basically helps identify a priority, a prioritization of roads where you can invest maintenance money, where you can invest studies, identify studies where you're going to have the majority of the traffic that's going. It's a planning tool, and that's how we basically arrive at this classification. And this document in particular is not meant to establish a certain rideaway, a certain speed. It's just meant as a planning tool to help us not only prioritize the type of facility that we want to plan, but also overall where we should be investing city dollars where the traffic is. The case study?
Could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
You go off of that. Was there any consideration, again, about future growth in that particular area there? Because we have that unfinished dead end of Twenty-first Street that goes right by the middle school, that future plan to be hopefully to extend that to Vincent Road. Is there any, any consideration for that as far as, like you're saying, prioritizing where we spend some money? Because if we do open up that road, that would affect the traffic volumes and so forth on Vincent. Was that taken into account at all?
Yes, as you can see here, this, this particular road right here, Twenty-first Street, which is on Rio Hondo here, that's been classified as a major collector in here. And, you know, that is already taken into account, that, that idea that you want to provide mobility between here and Vincent. And then, of course, existing Twenty-first Street is already there that ties all the way to Loop 21. So that is shown here on the map, and that is, that is our recommendation too. Right now, or I think in the previous plan, it was, I'm not, I'm not sure if it was also classified as major collector, as a local collector, but, you know, this is our recommendation classification for that type of road.
Dan, didn't the school district express that they didn't want to open that road up? They wanted to control that traffic.
They, they were basing it on the study. I think the study came back that it wasn't going to be necessary for them to extend that or widen that road.
So if we do, it's just for us, but they don't have any objections to it?
No, they wouldn't have any objections to it. I think it's a good idea to do.
Well, we thought it was going to get done.
Well, the whole idea is to plan, like you're stating, for potential future growth and not cut ourselves short as far as the design and maybe where our funding may go in the future. That's the only reason why I'm asking. I think Twenty-first Street's important, but then it connects to Vincent Road as well.
Definitely, we agree.
And would the Twenty-first Street would also alleviate, it would take some pressure off of Rio Honda also. Would it not, then it would allow them to have a different avenue?
Yeah, that gives another opportunity from traffic coming along the loop to come in directly via Twenty-first and on to Rio Hondo. This segment here, though, there isn't much traffic right now here. The school is proposing some improvements that will basically connect, provide access to Morgan. And because of Morgan, the, and, oh, excuse me, because of the overall locations of where the homes are, where the school boundaries are, we expect a lot of the traffic really to coming from the south, here from Morgan, coming up this way and then turning here into the parent drop-off, which will be located on this side. Of course, Rio Hondo will have, there has already predominant, predominant traffic coming from the, from the west here, coming in and then turning into the school, and then it will access here the improvement. And I think this other slide shows it better. In here, where there's access to Morgan here, and then Rio Hondo traffic, we do expect it to come in here, come in here and be able to drop off. This is the drop-off loop, and they expect to be able to get out here and head on back.
I think the other area that we had some concern with at the last meeting was the ninth grade campus and North Commerce and back in that area. Did you go back and reevaluate some of the thoughts that y'all had proposed?
Regarding the ninth grade academy that's located on Teak?
Yes.
Yeah, we went back and looked at that. And in here, you know, we saw the road, this road right here, so Parquet Berries in width, and it is thirty-six feet, up to forty-four. And right in here, it's about thirty-six, and then it widens out as it gets closer to...
I think one of the points of congestion that we anticipated, that we envisioned was crossing the tracks because a lot of the, I mean, if every ninth grader in the city's going to go to that school, they're going to be coming from all over the east side. Their, their points of access are going to be crossing the tracks somewhere on North Commerce.
In particular, we didn't go that far out. We, we looked at this immediate area here, looked at this T, Lozano, and also T Street, and how the traffic would go in there. Realize that T Street will basically, which ties into Fair Park down here, and then T ties down to US 77, North Mount Frontage here. And then, of course, we've got Commerce that's, that's over here. The majority of the traffic, because of the way the city is laid out and the way the homes are, the majority of traffic is, will be coming from here and from T Street. And there will be traffic that comes here because the drop-off will be over here. So we do expect traffic coming via Wichita and then Lozano and then being able to go around the parent loop here, which is right here, and circulate and get back out. So that is, all of that is taken into account. As I mentioned, the model itself does not, did not produce the kind of numbers that we are anticipating along here because it's simply that model doesn't have that information yet about the school. In the next cycle, and that's where it needs to be provided.
I think right now, you know, it would be to the benefit of the community if we did something on Commerce where you turn in to go across the tracks to go to the auditorium area, the ball stadium area. But we need better turning lanes. We probably need a traffic light there to help.
And that's one of the recommendations that we made as part of another study that we did on behalf of the MPO, which included that route. Commerce was the observation that there's a significant delay there as you're coming off from Fair Park into, into Commerce. There's quite a bit of delay there. We do recommend a signal.
And also at Wilson, where it intersects with the Commerce.
Now, that, that recommendation was strictly based on travel, on the delays. In order to install a signal, there's a warrant analysis that needs to be done that basically justifies. We did it again based on delay. However, the justification is based on volumes, you know, how much actual volumes you have, so that there is a good investment of money soon, you know.
So do we determine that as a priority, that would be something that we'd want to do sooner than later?
Yeah, that is, that is one that should be done sooner than later.
Yep. Going into Fair Park or also Wilson?
The one at Wilson, we did not see the same level.
It's heavily traveled, for sure.
Yeah. And again, that would have, that determination would have to be made based on a warrant study, which is the one that basically justifies the installation.
We would have to hire someone to do a traffic check.
Okay. Based on, after, after done a case study, the commission sent you back the last time, so take a look at some of these numbers to tell us whether or not you think they're accurate by testing some of them. Just basically your overall conclusion, if there's not any significant deviation or concern about...
There were, of the three cases, there was one, and Rio Hondo was the one that did not closely match what the model is telling us. But simply because a lot of that traffic that we see already is because of the school that's there. It basically already is...
Not sufficient to change the plan?
Not sufficient to...
Not, not, you didn't say anything that would suggest that we should adopt the plan?
That is correct.
The recommendation is still that we should adopt the plan?
Yes. And that's one thing that I generally wanted to emphasize, that we did not just base our decision just based on an output from a model. We use not only that other criteria that I mentioned, but also our engineering judgment.
And the staff's recommendation is still to adopt the plan?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Then let's go to the public hearing. Open the public hearing. Does anyone want to speak for or against the proposed long-range thoroughfare plan? In hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and ask the city attorney to read the caption after I've concluded the court action to approve adopted orders on first reading, amending the City of Harlingen Vision 2020 Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Four Long Range Thoroughfare Plan by upgrading the designation of locations described in the executive summary form prepared by the Planning and Zoning Department.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Comprehensive Plan, Vision 2020, Chapter Four, Figure 4-3, Long Range Thoroughfare Plan, by upgrading the designation of First Street from Ayoto Drive to Canal North Side, from a local street to a major collector street. Jefferson Avenue from Commerce Street to Seventh Street, from a local street to a major collector street. First Street from Harrison Avenue to Business 77, from a local street to a minor collector street. And Wilson Road from Commerce Street to Expressway 77, Frontage Road, from a local street to a minor arterial street. And downgrading the designation of Sixth Street from Harrison Avenue to Commerce Street, from a minor arterial street to a major collector street. Thirteenth Street from Harrison Avenue to Here Street, from a major collector street to a local street. M Street from Frontage Road 83 to Tony Butler Avenue, from a major collector street to a local street. Austin Avenue from First Street to Business 77, from a major collector street to a minor collector street. Fillmore Avenue from Commerce Street to J Street, Commerce, to east of Second Street and east of Second Street to F Street, from a major collector street to a minor collector street. Van Heren Avenue from Commerce to L Street, from a major collector street to a minor collector street. Sixth Street from Harrison Avenue to Jefferson Avenue, from a minor arterial street to a local street. L Street from Jackson Avenue to Monroe Avenue, from a major collector street to a local street. Teak Avenue west of Expressway 77, from a major collector street to a local street. Seventh Street from Business 77 to Loop 49, from a minor arterial street to a local street. New Combs Road from Mount Avenue to three hundred feet of the north rideaway line of Loop 49, from a major collector street to a local street. Dilworth Road from a Frontage Road 83 to Business 83, from a major collector street to a local street. Palm Boulevard from a Business 83 to Garrett Road, from a minor arterial street to a major collector street. Palm Court Drive, south of eighty, south of Business 83 to Garrett Road, from a minor arterial street to a major collector street. Palm Court Drive from the city limits to the Drain Ditch, from a minor arterial street to a local street. Dixieland Road, south of Lincoln Avenue, from a major arterial street to a major collector street. Super Place Road from a Frontage Road 83 to Garrett Road, from a major arterial street to a major collector street. Ranger Road from Expressway 77, 83 to Military Highway, from a major arterial street to a minor collector street. FM 508 from Town of Combs to Town of Rio Hondo, from, an arterial street to a major collector street. Morgan Boulevard from Rio Hondo Road to Jefferson Avenue, from a major arterial street to a minor arterial street. FM 507 from FM 508 to Rio Hondo Road, from a major arterial street to a minor arterial street. FM 800 from Ebony Road to FM 509, from a major arterial street to a minor arterial street. Hale Avenue from a New Hampshire to Ed Carey Drive, from a major collector street to a local street. Louisiana from a Frontage Road to the Theme Nine Road, from a major collector street to a local street. Lipscomb Road from Louisiana to End, from a major collector street to a local street. New Hampshire from Frontage Road to Rihanna, from a major collector street to a local street. Wayland Road from Hayne to six hundred feet of Business 77, from a major collector street to a local street. Seventy-sixth Drive from Jefferson to three hundred feet south of Center Line of Soul Ross, Seventh Street, from three hundred feet south of Soul Ross to Business 77, from a minor arterial street to a local street. First Street from Harrison Avenue to Business 77, from a minor arterial street to a local street. Vincent Avenue from FM 507 to Seventh Street and Business 77 to End, from a major arterial, excuse me, a major collector street to a local street. Twenty-first Street from Loop 499 to End, from a major collector street to a local street. Brennan Road from a Dilworth Road to Crockett Road, from a major collector street to a local street. Mayfield Road from Tucker Road to Dixieland Road, from a major arterial street to a local street. Morris Road from Ranger Road to Ed Carey, from a major collector street to a local street. Durrie Lane from Town Lane to Beckham Road, from a major collector street to a local street. FM 800, Bass Probe, I'm sorry, Bass Boulevard from Orpith's Road to Military Highway, from a major arterial street to a minor arterial street. Grimes Avenue east of Loop 499, from a major arterial street to a major collector street. Beckham Avenue from Commerce Street to Eleventh Street, from a major collector street to a local street. Harrison Avenue between Palm Court Drive and Frontage Road, French's Road, from major arterial streets to a minor arterial street. And Towner Avenue between Palm Court Drive and Frontage Road, from a major arterial street to a minor arterial street. And amending the rideaway specifications for a minor collector street, and amending the roadway specifications for a major arterial, minor arterial, major collector, minor collector, and a local street, providing for publication and ordering other matters related to the line.
So move.
Mayor, just one thing to point out on the caption, line number eighteen going down. I think there may be an error in the caption language, referring to Seventh Street. I think the plan asked for it to be, or recommended it be changed from the classification of minor arterial to a major collector. On the caption, it reads, it reads minor arterial to a local street.
Okay. We can, can we, we can correct that on the second reading? City Attorney, we can correct that on the second?
Yes, sir, of course.
Okay. Then we have a motion of a second. We'll work on the correction for the second reading. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, motion carried. Item ten, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for specific use permit, SUP, to allow an adult business tattoo shop in the general GR district located at 1242 Morgan Boulevard, bearing a legal description of lots 36 through 39, Block One, Delmar Subdivision Unit Two. Advocate James P. Rodriguez.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant's request is a specific use permit to allow a tattoo studio out of the existing six hundred and seventy-four square feet that's located on the corner of Morgan Boulevard and Grimes Avenue, which would be this commercial plaza here. This is the existing suite here, which would be the one in the center of this commercial plaza, about six hundred and seventy-four square feet. The hours of operation would generally be, seven days would be from twelve noon to twelve midnight. The request was reviewed by appropriate city departments. Neither of the departments had any objection to the request. This is the site plan. Again, this is the suite in the center. Effective property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius were notified, approximately about twenty-one more, as we sound of property owners, staff had received any objection to the request. Public hearing was also considered by the P and Z Commission, there were concerns addressed. Staff at P and Z Commission recommend approval subject to the applicant maintaining the required parking, paying the required state permits, and complying with appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions on that.
Please go to the public hearing. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against this specific use permit? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above-mentioned specific use permit. And ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number O seven dash two seven of the City of Harlingen, to issue a specific use permit to Hapo B. Rodriguez to allow an adult business tattoo studio in a general retail DGR district located at 1242 Morgan Boulevard, bearing a legal description of lots 36 through 39, Block One, Delmar Subdivision Unit Two, Subject Two One, maintain the required off-street parking spaces. Two, obtain and maintain the proper permits from the city and state. Three, comply with the requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, police, and fire prevention departments, providing for publication and ordering other matters related to the foregoing.
Sir, motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, item 11, consider and take action to accept or reject bids in a award contract for Phase 3, Buchanan Hayes and M Street Drainage Improvement Project under bid number 2013-05.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This project is Phase 3 of the Buchanan Hayes and M Street Drainage Improvement Project from the irrigation canal to Grant, north to Lincoln, then east to M Street, then north to Mitchell Street. It will consist of installation of storm sewer system to alleviate flooding in the area. Of the 35 companies notified of the bid, nine picked up bid tickets and five submitted sealed bids. After reviewing the bids and paperwork submitted, CDVG and Engineering Department recommend the project be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, GP7 Construction, whose bid was $399,726. Staff recommends approval.
Mayor, I'd like to motion that we approve the staff's recommendation.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 12, consider and take act- that's great, great. Consider take action to approve the Economic Development Corporation Department, Inc.'s manager and chief executive officers' amended employment contract, increasing his annual salary. Is there a, is there a motion approved? This was an, Mr. Arza came in about six months ago, and the salary that the board authorized was 140, but they basically started about at 130 in effect probationary period, sort of like we did with Carlos.
And I believe the other EDC directors, that's comparable to what other comparatively sized cities pay their EDC director.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to be approved, increasing-
I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion? All right, the board was very, praised Rondell's work over the last six months and congratulated him on a job well done.
One of the things I'd like to say that I really appreciated, that weekly newsletter that you send out?
I try to do it weekly, yes.
Yes, I think that's fantastic. I think that keeps the transparency in the, at the EDC, you know, you're telling us what's going on, and I appreciate that.
And we get to learn a little bit about what your kids are doing every week, too. All right.
I think that, at least it shows that you're, you're in there, you're doing it.
We have a motion, and do we have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Rondell. Item, repass item 13. Item 14, consider and take action to approve and consent to the city manager's appointment of Elvia Trevino as the City of Harlingen's Finance Director.
Mayor, City Commission, I wanted maybe just to give you a quick background on Ms. Trevino's employment or tenure here with the City of Harlingen. Ms. Trevino has been employed with the City of Harlingen for 37 years, in various capacities, capacities with the finance department. She has served as interim finance director on six different occasions for a total of 36 months. She's been an assistant finance director for 23 years, and served as municipal court supervisor for eight years. Based on her track record, her impressive background, and the fact that she did a great job as interim finance director, I am recommending that we make her, take the interim out and make her the permanent finance director, and also recommending that her salary go from the current, which is 86,519, 88, to 91,519, 88, with a car allowance as well.
All right, so we'll make that motion.
Mayor, great pleasure from doing work with you, Elvia, for the last six years that I've been on the commission. You've always been responsive, and I think you deserved it, you definitely have earned it, so I'm going to make the motion that you get-
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to also congratulate Elvia. She's been around for a long time, she knows the city's finances very well, she's done an excellent job during her tenure here, and it's very well deserved.
Well, it's about time.
Yes.
Who can afford the next 37 years?
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Elvia, for all your service during the city. Consider, item 15, consider and take action to affirm or rescind the March 20th, 2013 approvals by the City Commission of the Youth League contracts between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen Pony Girls Softball League for the use of Arroyo Park, City of Harlingen and Harlingen Texas Bronco Pony League for the designated fields at Victor Park, and the City of Harlingen Pony Girls American Little League for the use of designated fields at Park and Market.
Mayor Commissioners, four weeks ago, you gave approval to six separate youth league contracts for use of city-owned facilities, conditioned on that before the city manager signed those contracts, that staff were to receive from each of those leagues two things. One of them was verification of their nonprofit status, and two was their most recent IRS 990 form. The IRS 990 form is the tax return that nonprofits submit on a yearly basis. Last week, when I wrote the executive summary, you have the latest on those six leagues. Three of them, at the time of your approval four weeks ago, had already complied with those two requirements. Those three have been submitted to the city manager's office for signature. The other three, which are Harlingen Texas Bronco, which play at Victor Park, Harlingen Pony Girls Softball at Arroyo Park, Harlingen American Little League, which plays at Pendleton Park. Those three, when I wrote this last week, those three had not yet submitted all of those items. Today, I can tell you that we have both of those items from Harlingen Pony Girls Softball League, they have complied with those two requirements, and so shortly that contract will be submitted to the city manager's office for signature. And Harlingen American Little League has complied with those two requirements, and that contract will be shortly submitted to the city manager's office for signature. Harlingen Texas Bronco, which plays at Victor Park late this afternoon, submitted to me a copy of an extension they filed for, with the IRS, that will allow them six months in which to complete their taxes. And that is the update that I have for you.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we affirm the contracts with the Harlingen Pony Girls Softball League and the Harlingen American Little League, and that we exclude until the other league, Texas Bronco, runs.
Yes, sir.
Until they produce their documents.
Does the extension, at that point, make a statement that they are a nonprofit? That was the reason we wanted the 990, was it not? Yeah, the 990 ensures that they're following, of course, that they're following all of the procedures that the nonprofit is. That particular league, we do have proof that they are an active nonprofit, it's just that we do not have a current tax return for them. But again, late Saturday, we do have a copy of an extension that they filed Monday.
How much more time they need to bring those, want to-
I believe with the extension, they get an additional six months, but a letter that they submitted to me says we will have it by the end of June. Please keep in mind, this league is currently playing. I mean, their season is underway.
Well, I can modify it, but I would say with the provision or the contingency that they provide proof of tax return has been submitted within 30 or 45 days.
Yeah, the letter they gave me said June 30th, but whatever you guys would like, we will read that.
I would make my motion to approve that league's facility use agreement as well, contingent upon them providing the actual return by the time that they remit it to-
Clear, yes, sir.
But they're currently playing right now, which means that June the 30th, their league will be done, or will they still be in play?
They should still be in play. It'll be the tail end of the season, but they should still be in play by then.
And so if we put the stipulation on there, June the 30th comes and goes.
Well, that just means that their next year, that will affect their next year.
That's what, okay, and that's what I wanted to make sure you were clear.
We can let them finish out if we don't renew their contract. But I don't, you know, Mr. Mesmer, you know, wanted that stipulation, I don't want to just waive it completely without a contingent upon them.
How many years they've been operating with not showing anything on that?
Could you repeat that, sir?
How many, how many years they've been doing this, operating, the league with not showing anything on that?
Well, they have, they proved a nonprofit. Yeah, they've been a nonprofit.
They just, this is last year's tax return, they haven't-
All right, this is the first year we've ever asked for an actual tax return for them, so I'm unable to answer that question.
Can we go to 2011?
We have asked for that, because what we had asked of these leagues was the most recent one. And part of what they are doing is going back and amending last year's return, is what they have told us, and working on this year's return.
Okay.
I think we've asked everybody to do it.
Would you recommend the nonprofit?
Well, I mean, I feel, I sympathize with the kids, because we don't, we're here, we represent the citizens of Harlingen, and I don't want to harm the children, but, you know, this is a pretty tough deal, where five others have complied, and we have one that won't even produce a 2011.
Well, he said that they're submitting, they're resubmitting their 2011.
But he did say that we asked for the most current. I mean, 2009 would be current, if that's the most current they have.
Well, this is a new requirement that we're imposing, and I think, you know, we should err on the side of not kicking the kids out of the-
No, I agree, I agree, I'm just saying, it just, it's tough when they don't even want to comply.
I say we reevaluate it in 45 days, after the date at which they've committed to have the return submitted. That's what I say, I mean, I mean, there's no reason it's not harming anybody, and we can always revoke their facility use agreement if they don't provide it.
You got a look on your face, go ahead.
No, I think that would be a good consideration. I mean, you have, it's not a simple, kind of dry question to answer, because you're dealing with kids that are already in the process of their season. So I would agree with the fact that maybe we put that, hold them to their word, they're saying they'll have it within those 45 days, and we go from there.
Yes.
You got special circumstances right now, because of the kids, and the season's already underway.
I don't want to be put up as an ogre.
It's too late.
It's too late.
It's too late.
Okay, we got the, you had a motion, second motion?
I'll second it.
Now we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Did you, did we understand the motion?
I did.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 16, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
Mayor, I have one, reappointment of Robert Garzen to the zoning board's adjustments.
Are there any board appointments?
I've got some, I have a question, this is a view, downtown improvement board, I got some of that, and library advisory board, Mary Torres, and municipal advisory board, David Gray.
And I have two. I have a new appointment, Carly Thomas, to the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board, and a reappointment of Hector Lopez to the Planning and Southern Commission.
Okay, let me have the, you want to pass these down, you want to pass them down to Amanda?
Yeah, she has the topic.
Okay, if you already, all right, is there a motion?
Mr. Sanchez, do you have, did you already submit a list to Amanda?
Yes.
Is there a motion? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. What board did you want to put them on? Which board was that?
Downtown Improvement.
Okay.
Mayor, I make the motion that will be approved, board will-
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, item 17 is opposed to executive session, filing items per chapter 551, subchapter DBTCA, waiver code, section 551, consultation with the city attorney, city legal advisor regarding Charles E. Lee versus the City of Harlingen, Texas, cause number 2010, DCL 4839, and the 103rd District Court, County, to discuss possible settlement negotiations, and also consultation of personal lease agreement with the City of Harlingen and White Wings Baseball Club LLC for the use of the baseball stadium known as Harlingen Field. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Make the motion, we move into executive session, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is going to go into the back room to discuss two items in executive session, rule come back, there may be action, may not be.
I'll be right back. I'm going to beat you.
Okay, item, we're going to, item 18, consider take possible action, and if there'll be no action on that, we'll pass item 18. Item 19, consider take action to approve a new lease agreement between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen Professional Baseball Club LLC, also known as White Wings Baseball Club LLC, for the use of the baseball stadium known as the Harlingen Field.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the new lease agreement with the change particularly related to the city's use, daily use of the park, to set and establish a utility cost for the park to be paid to the White Wings organization for when the city or other non-White Wings users use the facility, and also with the, some minor technical reporting changes or resequencing that staff has recommended.
I'd ask for clarification on the motion regarding the utility rate, whether it be a reasonable daily rate based on an average of a certain amount of time or otherwise, how you wanted to find that.
Yes, I just wanted to define that utility rate to be a specific rate specified in the contract, I agree to.
So how's that rate determined, sir?
We're going to give the staff-
We'll negotiate it, we'll get the staff.
We're going to put a number in there.
Okay.
No, but we're going to give the staff the, we're delegating that, you know, the staff can make that decision about what a fair rate.
Yes.
Thank you for that information.
They don't need to come back to us.
No, it's going to be a specific number in the contract.
Right, okay, any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
We don't have a second.
Second?
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, that concludes our meeting, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.